Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, May 23, 2023. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kael Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And before we begin, should we get the mayor? Yeah, before we begin, Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilwoman Lavelle, will you escort Mayor Ganey into chambers? May we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance? That way?
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay. Well, no, they should have came this way. Well, somebody needs to explain that. Okay, there'll be no more proxy here, that's all. Welcome to chambers. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and please join us. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberity, and justice for all. In a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Mayor Ganey, do you want to come forward? With you, whoever you want with you.
Eric.
And Barb.
Barb. Come on.
Sorry, Councilwoman Warwick.
Y'all ready? Good morning, everyone. Oh, we can do better than that. Come on, we come to celebrate our children. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. I just want to say thank you. I want to thank Councilwoman Barb, Councilwoman Erica, I want to thank the superintendent for being here. Alderweil is back-to-back when it comes to winning basketball championships, and we always want to be able to recognize our own because at the end of the day, we hear so much negativity that sometimes we have to remember that our kids are positive. And what they do for the city and for this region is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And today, we come to recognize Alderweil as the city champions back-to-back. Now, I'm wearing some Alderweil gear. You know, this is a little different for me. I know I'm gonna get a lot of calls tonight. But I couldn't be more proud of this team and their coaching staff. Their coach comes from a lineage of great coaches in this region and the city in this region. And so I know he gets it honestly. Coach Crumby is a wonderful, wonderful coach, and so was his father. And so I just want to thank Coach Crumby and his assistant coaches for being here. But I want to thank Alderweil for continue, continue to be excellence. I want the council people to speak because they represent this district, and then we'll continue from there. Councilwoman? Which one?
Yeah, I don't have too much. Just congratulations, you guys. Great job. You should be very proud of yourselves. I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I want to echo that. We're all proud of you. We know you're scholar athletes, and I think that's the most important part, that you take what you do inside the classroom as seriously as basketball, and that you are going to use both of those experiences and the skills you learn in both, you know, inside and outside the classroom to carry you through your life. So I can't wait to see what's next for you all. Congratulations.
Good morning, everyone. I am just extremely proud to be here. There's a saying that says nothing in life is so complicated that it cannot be achieved by discipline and hard work. This is a visualization and a representation of discipline and hard work, not only on the court but in the classroom. And so it makes me extremely proud. Congratulations, Dr. McCoy, principal, Coach Crumby, assistant coach, I saw him somewhere, Harlacker, he's somewhere here. Can you wave? Oh, huh? Oh, I'm sorry, Roderick, I'm sorry. I said Harlacker, excuse me, sorry. And all the student athletes, including their coach, Zamori, their manager, their team manager. So pretty exciting for them. And so I just want to extend my congratulations as well. Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the coach to come up, and he's gonna bring up one of his players because we know that every, it's very rare that our kids get to speak at a podium where the president of council stands and talk about what it means to them. And I want them to have this experience. Coach?
Hey, thanks very much, Mayor Ganey, Dr. Walters. Thank you, council. I know you have a pretty busy agenda today. I see Mr. Scarrata back there. We've known each other from the hardwood years back. I just want to thank everyone for having us here. We appreciate all the board members and the city council members for allowing city league sports to continue. It does a lot for all of our community members, especially the young people in our community. At this time, I'd like to bring up one of our tri captains, Antoine Ward Thurman, to just speak briefly about how Alderweil's basketball has impacted him and impacted all the guys on the team. So thank you, everyone, and we really appreciate the honor.
Yeah, DICE basketball has really changed my life. Like, when I first started in ninth grade, I didn't play too much. But Coach Crumby always believed in me. He told me, keep working. And coming into my senior year, I was a starter. And this year really meant a lot to me because I felt like this year's team was closer. We was like, we was really a team this year. Like, we bonded on and off the court, something crazy, and it showed on the court, too, as we barely lost, and like, it showed. So this year really meant a lot to me, and I'm gonna really miss this team as I graduate this year.
Wow, wow, thank you. Council President, you want to say anything? You sure? All right, all right. So I'm gonna read a little bit of the proclamation because it was more important that you heard from them. And whereas the Pittsburgh Alderweil Boys Basketball Team is a dynamic combination of resiliency, hard work, dedication, and the will to be crowned back-to-back city league champions. They just won their second consecutive city league championship, defeating Pittsburgh's Obama 66 to 45. And whereas Ethan Anish, did I say it right? Anish led the Dragons with 16 points to go with four rebounds, four assists, while Sam Kelly finished with 15 points, six rebounds. And Logan Golly, did I get it right? Golly, okay, Golly had 14 points, five rebounds, and four assists. This is what it's made of. And all the names that's here today, let it be known and let it be resounding that this is Alderweil's Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor? Proclamation's approved. Thank you.
So before we go, Councilwoman, can the council people, these two right here, just get a picture with them by themselves?
Yeah, and then I want to have Larry Scarrata come up because I see some recruits for you.
Get up front. I'll get up front. Get up front. Councilwoman. Council, council, you get up front.
Come up.
Hold it. Before I take mine, I want you to open up that proclamation. Open it up and show.
Put something up front.
I want to say some?
Come up. He's the superintendent of high schools.
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Come up. Come up. Chief Scarrata, come up. And come up here. We'll do one next. Thank you. Can we have? Wait, 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 wait. Can we have all the council come up for the photo, please? All the council. All the council come up for the photo, please, for another photo. Get it. You guys got work today.
Yeah, we got work.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Good job, Coach.
I just want to publicly say, Councilwoman, I mean, Council President, I just want to publicly, if it's okay, say congratulations to the new chief of police.
You want to stay for the vote?
Is talking right now?
We're gonna do it, no, and we have to go through the presentation.
I just want to say congratulations, please.
Okay, and we have a few other proclamations to be presented. We have Councilwoman Strasburger, you have one.
Would everyone hear from Mitch Swain? Please come up. Mitch Swain is retiring from the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council after 17 years, and there's just a tremendous amount that he has been able to accomplish in elevating what's already a pretty impressive and incredible culture for artists. All the way up here. You can stand right next to me. All the way up, all the way up. Culture for artists here in the city of Pittsburgh and really elevating that even further over his tenure here. So I won't delay. Whereas in 2005, Mitch Swain became the founding CEO of the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council. Since then, he has helped to secure millions of dollars in private and public arts funds for the region. And whereas Mr. Swain's efforts helped to defeat the planned funding of the PA Council on the Arts in 2009. And whereas Mr. Swain served on the Board of Citizens for the Arts in Pennsylvania for 13 years until 2020, and he served as the board chair from 2010 to 2018. And whereas Mr. Swain's advocacy and efforts helped to lead to the formation of the bicameral bipartisan Pennsylvania Arts and Cultural Legislative Caucus in 2012. And whereas Mr. Swain coordinated with other local arts organizations to create an art exhibition on London's South Bank in 2019. Pittsburgh Art on the Bank ran from June 2nd to 9th, 2019, and featured artwork from various Pittsburgh artists to show Pittsburgh's cultural value. And whereas Mr. Swain's advocacy brought the Governor's Awards for the Arts Ceremony to Pittsburgh in 2019. The event honored the year's awards recipients, and it marked the first time since 1997 that Pittsburgh was the hosting city. And whereas Mr. Swain led the Arts Council's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, overseeing the distribution of more than $200,000 in grant money to independent artists experiencing losses in income. And whereas Mr. Swain was a part of the statewide advocacy effort to bring $15 million in American Rescue Plan funding to artists and arts and cultural organizations in the near future. And whereas Mr. Swain will retire from the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council on June 1st, 2023, after over 17 years of service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does recognize and thank Mr. Mitch Swain for his leadership and advocacy as CEO of the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council and his dedicated service to the arts community in Pittsburgh. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, May 25th, 2023 to be Mitch Swain Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Second, approve.
Aye.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this. I want to thank my wife, Tracy, and my family for supporting me through the last 30-plus years of working in the arts. My board, the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council, led by Dr. Veronica Morgan Lee and particularly Elsa Limbaugh, who helped to coordinate this. I want to thank councilperson Erica Strasburger for this award and all of you on council, and particularly Council President Cale. Really want to thank the staff of the Arts Council. When you're in the CEO position, you get credit and the blame, you know, for a lot of things. I've gotten more credit, and a lot of times it's credit from what these folks have done. And I'm really proud of the folks that I've worked with over the last 18 years at the Arts Council. I started in the arts, I'm gonna be brief. I started in the arts about 30 years ago, working in Columbus, Ohio, and saw the work that the Greater Columbus Arts Council could do. And when there was an opportunity, you know, to create a merger that resulted in the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council, actually, one of the merged organizations was led by Councilperson Gross many years ago. I jumped at the chance and really, really fortunate to have this job. There are very few jobs like this across the United States, and I've been really lucky to have this one. So I really appreciate this award and the privilege to have led the Arts Council all these years, and look forward to seeing the bright future that the arts and culture community will bring to Pittsburgh. And I think that will be counted on even more as the city grows and as we become even more of a place for everyone. And I think arts and culture has a really important role to play in improving this community's approach to racism and diversity, equity, inclusiveness, accessibility. So I'm very hopeful that that'll happen. So thank you very much.
Very briefly, my name is Morgan Caspewitz. I'm Director of Research and Special Projects at the Art Council. I've been working under Mitch since fall of 2020. And since he announced his retirement last summer, I've had the pleasure of going around and meeting with a lot of elected officials, some of you here in this room, and also arts leaders, and heard a lot of those stories directly from people about the impact of Mitch's work on them as arts leaders and also across Pennsylvania in terms of arts funding, arts policy, and support for the arts and its vibrancy and its value across the state. And so I know, despite the fact that Mitch is retiring, I know that that will live on. And I'm really glad to be able to stand here and honor him today. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, and I have two proclamations, and Councilman Burgess has one to be read into the record, and Councilman Kraus has two to be read into the record. But we'll next go to my two proclamations. I'm gonna start with changemakers because I'm gonna talk a little bit longer about Gold Star families. So we're gonna start with changemakers. For those, for changemakers, please come forward. We have the Honorable Tom Baker with us. You can come up here with me. Hey, come up here. Whoever. Hey, aye, how are you? We're gonna start with changemakers, which they do a tremendous amount of work in our region. Whereas over 50 years, Multiplying Good has been honoring those who put others first. Changemakers is an initiative of Multiplying Good Pittsburgh that celebrates servant leaders across southwestern Pennsylvania. And whereas Changemakers is a diverse group of professionals who demonstrate a commitment to service and has the potential to truly move our region and state forward as servant leaders in the community. Most importantly, they are role models to students in action, a program for youth in middle schools, high schools, and out-of-school-time organizations in Pittsburgh and western Pennsylvania. Changemakers participate in a 16-week series of networking, volunteering, fundraising, recognition, professional development, and social events. And whereas the following individuals made up the first-ever class of changemakers and graduated in December of 2022. Tiffany Casti-Tascano?
Castagna.
Castagna. Jasmine Cho, Nelson Cooper, Gabriel Di Marchi?
Marchi.
Di Marchi. Say your names when you get up here, okay? Teresa Glover, Brittany Murray, Dr. Crystal Rose, and Bradley Wilkins. And whereas the following individuals make up the spring 2023 class of Pittsburgh changemakers, and upon completing all program requirements, will be honored with the prestigious Jefferson Award upon graduation. Donald Alexander, Carlington School District, Bernard Alexander, E3 Alliance of Greater Pittsburgh, Tom Baker, North Hills Community Outreach, and also a previous county council member. Chastity Bay, Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, Jacqueline Boggs, North Hills Community Outreach, Bridget Falk, Norwin High School, Teresa Hunt, 2C Premium Coffee, Perry Latimer, Butler County Tourism, and Beth Machine, Wesley Family Services, Dr. Christine McClure, University of Pittsburgh, and Dr. Shalegra Moy, brilliantly blessed community health and wellness, Monica Snyder, Coppers, and Deborah Titus Shine Society of Excellence Incorporated, and Penn Hills Charter School of Entrepreneurship. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Multiplying Good for recognizing individuals who excel in public service and inspire others to action through the Changemakers Initiative. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 to be Changemakers Day in the city of Pittsburgh. We have a motion to approve in a second. In a second. All in favor? Proclamation's approved. Thank you so much, everybody. Sorry, say a minute? You can say a few words and I'll go a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, President Cale Smith. Thank you, council. This is an exciting day for us. Changemakers is a newish program, as you heard, but it is here for the benefit of our young people. We are trying to elevate the role models, the representation, the entrepreneurship, and the diversity of our wonderful community of people who are caring about individuals in our schools and our out-of-school-time programs through our students in action. And so I'm really honored to be able to present these excellent changemakers and now Jefferson Award winners to you. And I appreciate your recognition because that's what we're all about, is making sure everybody gets heard for the good things that they're doing. So please do, keep doing good things and multiplying good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica Snyder, and I work for Coppers. Thank you so much for this honor and this recognition. It was an amazing program where we got to not only have an amazing class but also get to work with amazing youth in our community and just see the passion behind all of their projects to make the world a better place. So thank you.
Hi, friends. Tom Baker, NHCO. And I will say, I was the Alderweil dragon back in the 90s. So had Mayor Ganey asked me to come and bring the team out with him, I would have put the old costume back on from the 90s. But proud PPS alum, have loved this campaign with Multiplying Good. These are some of the kindest and best people in our region, and I'm proud to be their friend and colleague. So a big round of applause for all of them.
I'm Chastity Bay. I work for the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. And I am very honored to have met some of these beautiful, well, all of these beautiful people. I've known some of them before this, so met some of them new, but I'm happy that they're all my new friends.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Crystal Rose. And so when we talk about Multiplying Good, the one thing we talk about is our ripple effect. And so, you know, being a good leader means that you are bringing up the next group of leaders. And so that's what we do, is not only do we serve, but we serve so that others feel empowered to serve. And so that's why we're here, and thank you guys for this honor.
I am Jacqueline Boggs. Really just thank you. I am honored to be a part of this wonderful group, getting to meet all these changemakers and now Jefferson Award winners. So thank you.
And it's her birthday.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Christine McClure. And I just want to say it was an honor to be part of this class of changemakers. But it was the most impactful experience was working with the students in action across the region, especially from some of the communities that, I'm from Penn Hills, so some of the communities that don't often receive positive feedback. And so I want to just highlight some of those kids that worked with students in action and just let you know that there are hundreds of kids across our region that are doing great work, that care about community service, education, and giving back to their peers. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Teresa Hunt with 2C Premium Coffee. I'd like to say thank you for the honor and congratulations to Alderweil's basketball team. Team.
Hello, my name's Perry Latimer, and I am with Butler County Tourism. It was an absolute honor to be nominated to be part of this group. I look forward to continuing all of our work together for the youth of the area, and thank you again.
Good morning. Dr. Shalegra Moy. I just want to say, I'm lit, because the students I serve are fire. I'm always so excited for any opportunity to serve and be of service to young people, and this recognition and this honor is really just icing on the cake. I'd do this every day if I could. Thank you. And I'm from the west end of Pittsburgh, too.
Hi, I'm Bradley Wilkins. I am the co-chair for the Board of Multiplying Good and the first original Pittsburgh changemaker from 2020. I was recruited on the side of the road at the Highmark Walk. But no, honestly, this has been an amazing experience. I look forward to continuing. We are currently nominating new changemakers, so if you know a professional who's doing great work in their community and wants to get involved with the students, please let myself or Jody know by June 9. And this group of people, multiplyinggood.org. But this group of people, some of them I would've never crossed paths with, some of them I've crossed paths with in previous things, but these truly are my friends, my family, and we're going to continue to spread this ripple throughout this area.
All members want to come forward for the photo, please? All members want to come forward for the photo, please? And we have a list of people for you. Here's all your proclamations. And I just want to say what a great thing it was to have, I didn't see Mayor Ganey's back in there. Come up. Do you want to get one more photo with Mayor Ganey, please? I didn't see, I'm sorry, I didn't see he was here.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well, this weekend, we have Memorial Day weekend. I want to make sure we always remember what this weekend's for. And so can we please have the Gold Star families, please, come forward? With Mayor Ganey. Mayor Ganey, you want to come forward for this one? Okay, sorry. Do you guys want to come forward? I learned about the Gold Star families when I was at an event for veterans, and I was just amazed at all that they do. And thank you very much for the sacrifices your families have made for our country. On Monday, May 29, 2023, our nation will join together to honor the fallen heroes of our armed forces in the 155th anniversary of Memorial Day. And whereas in 1868, Major John A. Logan called for a nationwide day of remembrance to honor Civil War fallen military personnel, known as Decoration Day. After World War I, the holiday evolved to commemorate American military personnel who died in all wars, and was designated Memorial Day by Congress in 1967. And whereas during World War I, families honored their service members by displaying flags and banners depicted as a white field, a red border, and a blue star within the white field for each family member serving in the armed forces. President Wilson approved the wearing of the black armband with the gold gilt star, and that approval led to the gold star covering the blue star on service flags and banners as the highest honor. And whereas two congressionally chartered organizations formed from the Gold Star Honor, American Gold Star Mothers founded by Grace Darling Sebold and Gold Star Wives of America Incorporated, founded by four young World War II widows. A week later, First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt joined as a Gold Star survivor when the president died. Today, these organizations continue to honor our fallen heroes by fighting for improved benefits for veterans, as well as Gold Star families. And whereas the title Gold Star Family honors the service member's ultimate sacrifice while acknowledging the family's grief and continued healing. We must never forget those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in defending our freedoms, and we should express our gratitude to the Gold Star families of our fallen hero warriors. In doing so, we honor all those who have died for the United States. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby ask that all city residents pause to remember and honor all fallen American military service members for the ultimate sacrifice and acknowledge their family's significant loss during this holiday weekend. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, May 29, 2023, to be Gold Star Family Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor? Proclamation's approved.
My name is Christine Stimmer-Chenicki. I'm the Region President of Gold Star Wives of America. We're actually changing our name to Gold Star Spouses, because we recognize that there's a lot of men in our organization, as well as partners, so we need to be very reflective of everyone. As a Gold Star child, my husband used to work for the City of Pittsburgh, actually in Public Works, so we're city all the way, right? So anyway, we're very, very appreciative of President Council Smith and all the other council members, as well as Mayor Ganey, for recognizing this day in Pittsburgh for Gold Star families. That encompasses all our children, aunts, uncles, mothers, fathers, and the spouses and partners. Thank you, and everyone.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Becky Nyren. I became a Gold Star wife in 2004, when my husband, Staff Sergeant Nathaniel Nyren, was killed in Iraq. And I didn't know what a Gold Star family member was prior to becoming one. So if we could all just take a moment, and if you don't know what that is, please look it up and spread the word. And I want to thank the City of Pittsburgh and Mayor Ganey for recognizing not only this Memorial Day weekend, but hopefully those in the future. So when you meet with your families this weekend, please pause and just remember what this is all about. Thank you.
I just want to thank Council, Council President. You know, there's no better way except on Memorial Day to remember those that fought and put everything on the line for us to have safety. That's number one, and we should always take a moment and pause and thank them for the sacrifice that they made. But secondly, we got to remember the families, the wives, the children, and everybody else who put it on the line. Because at the end of the day, a strong family is a strong soldier, a strong soldier is a strong general, and it does start with the love of family. And so we need to recognize the families and make sure that even on Memorial Day, as we recognize those that went before us and left, that we also recognize the family. Because without a family, where would they be? So today, I'd just like to say thank you, and thank you for being a stellar pillar of the reason why we always need to recognize family. And in recognize family, we recognize love. Thank you.
All members want to come forward for a photograph, please?
I was wanting to counsel you to do my cell phone.
So today, I'd just like to say thank you, and thank you for being a stellar pillar of the reason why we always need to recognize family. And in recognize family, we recognize love. Thank you. All members want to come forward for a photograph, please? We have three proclamations to be read into the record. Then we have, I'll just tell you what our schedule is, so people who are waiting. We have, we're going to our hearings committee, which is my committee, so we're jumping ahead on the agenda. We're going to do our swearing-in of our deputy clerk. We'll hear from, we'll hear from public speakers, do the presentation of papers, and under the presentation papers, after that, we'll move on to our unfinished business, which is the appointment of the chief. So there's a couple of things to go yet. Okay. Please read the, Madam Clerk, please read the remaining.
Councilman Burgess presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, May 21, 2023, to be Corona Baptist Church Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Kraus presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 21 through the 27, 2023, as Public Works Week in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman, Councilperson, Councilman Kraus also presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, May 25, 2023, to be Tyrone Clark Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve, all, in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. And now we'll move on to our hearings committee.
Resolution authorizing the appointment of Ashley Robinson as Assistant City Clerk of the City of Pittsburgh for a three-year term. This appointment shall become effective as of the date of the oath of office administered on Tuesday, May 23, 2023.
Think you have a motion to approve in a second?
From what we do, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ashley, you're approved. Congratulations. Ashley, you want to say a few words? Come up here. You have to get sworn in. And now we're going to do the swearing-in. Now we're doing the swearing-in ceremony, and we are joined by Judge Renner Watson, who also had some time here. It's up to her, whoever she wants. I'm good up here. Do it up here, Ashley, so people can see you. Do you mind? Do it up here. Do you want your family to come along? Can you tell them? You want somebody to hold the Bible for you? I said, we're not ready for this. Oh, my God, she deserves it. Good morning. It's what an honor and a pleasure to be asked to swear in Ms. Ashley Robinson. And you have your hand on the Bible? Raise your right hand to be sworn in, and repeat after me. And the position is the Pittsburgh Assistant City Clerk. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Ashley Robinson.
I, Ashley Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh.
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of this office to the best of my ability.
The duties of this office to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
You are duly sworn in.
Congratulations.
They're gonna have your speech.
Hello. A woman of like few words, so I just want to say thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Kim, for your support. I want to thank, you know, my family, and my mom and dad, and everybody. And, you know, I want to also thank some former clerks, and Lynda Johnson-Watzler, who kind of like helped me out and took me under her wing, and also Brenda Prey, who helped us, you know, move into like the 21st century a little bit. And I also want to thank the Clerk's Office, because without them, a lot of this would not happen. They're like the behind-the-scenes kind of people, so just thank everybody. Thank you.
We'll get a picture of her signing that. I don't know if our archivist wants to come get a photo of this, her signing this, for I'll get it for you. Did you get some? Okay, send them to him. Okay, send them to him. Congratulations. I just want to say, I think members might want to say a few things. I just want to say, Ashley, thank you. You got us through some really difficult times here, and you did have great mentors in Kim Clerk Baskin, Brenda Prey, and Lynda Johnson-Wassler. But you brought your own flair, and you are a person of few words, but you're a person of many actions. And so, I just want to thank you for all that you do. You did a great job getting us through. Members want to say anything?
Sure.
Still, Councilman Kraus? Oh, I'm sorry.
You're looking at me, but you said Kraus. No, I just want to say, congratulations, Ashley. Well deserved. To your family, there's not a more delightful person to work with, I will tell you. So, you know, it's been a long time coming. You deserve it, enjoy it, and congratulations.
Ashley, thank you for keeping us steady all these years. And we've, if we, we haven't said it enough. We've said it before, we haven't said it enough. This has been, you know, a crazy time for everybody, the last three, four years. So the pandemic and remote work, and everybody's lives are in upheaval, and we never have to worry about our clerk's office. And it's not that you don't all have your own lives too. So we really deeply appreciate that you keep the city running, because that's, effectively, that's what it is. We couldn't run if the clerk's office didn't run. Thank you for all of your commitment and your time.
Good morning. It's really good to see you up there, Ashley, and in that position. Not well deserved, well earned through the years. 16 years I've been working with you, and it's, it's, it's good to see your growth and your, how you've expanded, your understanding and knowledge and wisdom. The city clerk is the, the clerk's office, I should say, is the record keeper of the city, right? It's, 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 it's the primary function of the clerk's office besides trying to manage nine-strike hats on a, on a regular basis. But you do it effortlessly, and you do it with grace and a sense of humor, which I have always appreciated, and a smile that's infectious. So it really is my honor to, to, but it's true. And so, it is truly my honor to support you in your advancement here, and knowing that as I exit, the clerk's office will be at the best it's ever been, and that you will service well. So congratulations, Ashley. I'm very happy for you. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for all your years of service. It is indeed both well earned and well deserved. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ashley. It's been my pleasure to work with you for the past nearly decade that I've been at the city, and you've seen us through some, some difficult times and challenging times, and also some really incredible times. And I know that the clerk's office and city council will have you with your intelligence, your humor, and your calm to get us through whatever lies ahead. Thank you, and congratulations.
Yeah, I'll just, congratulations. I know as, as a newcomer, I know that my office, we've stumbled a few times, and you have always been there to be so kind and kind of guide us the right way, you know, and what we need to do, and really made coming to council and being new here incredibly easy. So I really appreciate that. I know that my team appreciates it. I'm sure your family is so proud of you, and I hope that you are proud of yourself. So congratulations.
Ashley, congratulations, and thank you for your commitment to the city of Pittsburgh, and thanks for keeping all the trains running here, especially with the communication. I think you're the, the top person in my inbox, usually with everything that's scheduled here and making sure that everything's running on time. So appreciate that, and looking forward to what you're going to do in your next role.
Thank you. And I just realized, Councilman Burgess, I apologize that you're still on. I apologize. Do you want to go?
Sure. I am the one to weather the darkness when I'm not here. You don't want anyone to get what I have, but.
It looks like you are here. Your background, I said, it looks like you are here.
Obviously, Ashley, you come from a, a family of service. Both your mom and your brother have served the city and served us well, and so it is an honor to actually have you in that position. We're grateful for your years of service, and we look forward to you using your abilities and your gift to lead us even further. Congratulations to you and your family, and God bless you.
Thank you. Do you want to take a photo with the family? Kim Clerk Baskin, did you want to say something? I just want to say you had no bigger cheerleader than Kim Clerk Baskin.
It is definitely a pleasure to see Ashley sworn in as the assistant. We've worked together for many years, and she is definitely a great human. She's even a better coworker. She, we go past the coworker phase. She's my friend and like a little sister. So I truly believe that she's going to serve this position well, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. And Kim, do you want to stay here for the photo? We're going to call all members up for a photo, and I do want to thank everyone in the clerk's office, because we have an amazing clerk's office. Everyone thinks that city council making a lot of decisions, doing a lot of things, they keep this city moving, and they just do a tremendous job. They don't miss a beat, and I just want to thank you all for all of your professionalism, everyone. Chris, Mike, Louise, Denise, and the two of you, that's right. And all of, everyone in our.
Archivist.
Underneath you, yeah. So thank you to everyone who helps city council continue. Come on. Okay, he was your second biggest cheerleader. He was probably actually bigger.
So good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Hi, how are you? So good to see you. This is why we have a clerk's office.
Thanks for making me look really dumb. Okay. Okay.
I'm glad we hired that person with a PhD in mass communications.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Ashley. Thank you, Judge Rena Watson. I've got somebody answer it, not just me.
Get to work. Get to work. Get to work.
We're going to go on to our next order of business, which is public comment. Wait till everyone leaves. We're going to go on to our next order of business, which is public comment. Please be seated. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood. For the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller, good morning.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell's Hoover, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. Core concern of the GIS is the vote. A council, the council of the city of Pittsburgh also, the vote or not? You district representative claimants who were on the ballot Tuesday, May 16th, all your nomination paper signatures verified by a PA state ID, no? No. You have had the opportunity to walk over to the Allegheny County Office Building. The ACOB has no biochemical or radiological scans like this building, completely insecure on these axes. You have had the opportunity to go to the ACED, Allegheny County Election Division floor, to the counter, to tell the people there, I want to check my vote, to verify for whom I voted, to make sure that my vote was not lost, was not misapplied last Tuesday. But you all didn't do that, did you? I'll take that to be, yes, you did not. The ACED forbids for whom verification. In this, you and Mr. Ganey support the illusion that the U.S. Constitution First Amendment right to the exercise of freedom of speech in the vote actually exists. It does not. We, the people, are not in control of our own vote. You are like the, the, the local councils across this country, the state assemblies, the federales, who do not want me or others to talk about this. But it is the truth. For whom verifiability does not exist across the United States. Dwight Eisenhower had such contempt for our vote system that he didn't vote until 1952, when he was running for president. You just remind me of those three monkeys, you know, see, hear, and speak no evil. You don't want to hear about it, you don't want to speak about it, you don't want to see it. What is this "it"? The "it" is that at the core of our democracy, there is no democracy, because we, the people, cannot verify our own votes. It reinforces the overall delusion that the United States Republican democracy is evidentially grounded in reality, but it isn't. And I view this as a form of evil. It is fundamental evil, not peripheral evil. It is at the core of the problem with the United States of America. I believe that the local legislature is primary over the state and over the federal government. I believe in you, in, in this institution. So citizens, the concern of this council should be the vote. I don't believe it is, not in this circumstance. We, the citizens, must take back the vote. Take back our vote.
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen, she's joining us online.
Here, shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. First, do no harm is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Blockbusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. Politicians and municipal employees are public servants. My husband was the dedicated model employee that should be emulated by others. The Pittsburgh Public Schools Board of Education in Pittsburgh has zero regard for the rights of the property owners, taxpayers, citizens, and voters in the Bon Air community. We do not consent to the detrimental school building remaining in our community. We do want a green space to replace the building and improve the location. This is the least that can be done to repair the loss that has occurred. The public servants of the school board shall work with the community to the best of their ability. It was fraudulent to claim that the community approved apartments there. The school board has proven itself as detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? On June 20th, 2022, the detrimental Bon Air school building worsened into being a disruptive and nuisance property. We have objected to apartments or anything other than a green space to replace the school. Tear it down. The building is a magnet to youth who broke into, in addition to breaking in, they had to be taken out in handcuffs. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been blighted with worse. Do not allow it to happen to Bon Air. The outcry to the school board has proven futile. Put pressure on them to sell it to the city for a dollar. Tear it down. Now that McHenry Park is no longer in Bon Air, we want the school to become a green space as replacement. Open deals, not shady deals in Bon Air. Even current DPS employees have said the solution is to tear the building down to create shady trees.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Ika, Ika Hana Hall-Makina. Is she on here?
Greetings and good day. My title is Ika Hana Hall-Makina. I am the Grand Inca of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And today, I would like to speak about justice delayed and justice denied. Justice delayed in America is the equivalent of justice. delayed and justice denied. Justice delayed in America is the equivalent of justice denied in America. You all have taken the very same oath that Ashley took today to support, protect, and defend the Constitution for the United States of America and also the PA Constitution. According to Article One, Section Two, Clause Three of the Constitution, it states, and excluding Indians, not taxed. Not taxed is not to be enumerated. Not taxed means not to be handled or censured. What does a city for all really look like? How could this be a city for all when indigenous people are overlooked and kept out of development opportunities? It's time to level the playing field and provide opportunities to indigenous people where opportunities exist. Our pedigree, our lineage dictates that any opportunity that exists should be given and extended to indigenous people. Opportunities to create sustainable communities where our culture can thrive. We need the barriers removed and pathways to promise created, as treaties exist, as examples of it, and need to be honored. We need access to our land to help to mitigate the likelihood that we'd ever be displaced again. We anticipate the creation of food forces to expand the practice of permaculture, to repair the damage that agriculture has caused to the land by constantly depleting the soil of vital minerals needed for growing and sustaining life. Our people have gone through a lot, mainly the reality of retelling American history. We need to do that through a truthful lens, a lens that sheds light on the painful part of history that the United States is scrambling to cover up yet again. Yes, it used to be burning books. Now it's the critical race theory, suppression of books, writings, and literature that expose the darker side of history, rarely told or spoken of accurately. There are even being attempts to make the cover up the existence of indigenous people in schools by removing any reference of indigenous names and likenesses to schools. I'd also like to utilize some of my time to shed light to a community concern at the Commons, where these people who live, tenants, and residents of the Commons are being forced out of their spaces and places without notice, terminating their contracts at their leisure. There are pods being delivered that happen to them.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is De Yaw. De Yaw. You're on mute. Please unmute your mic.
I have unmuted.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the invite as well. My name is De Yaw. I am speaking up from out of the Allegheny Commons, East Commons, to be exact, on the North Side. I would like to begin to say something is not right here, very wrong, that's going on in the Allegheny Commons complex. I want to identify myself as a Indigenous and Aboriginal. I dress myself as American Indian, and my status is disabled. I've been here in the complex a little bit over a year's lease, and I'm speaking to other people about the things that are going on here. So I would say I will have an opportunity to have other stories told too. But knowing that I have so much time here, Allegheny Commons has sold the property, obviously, to new owners under community preservation partners. They have moved forward with construction and renovation work here with our regards to the safety, health, and physical amendment status of a lot of the architectural imperatives. Many of the people affected here are disabled, elderly. We're talking about families and children, veterans. And just to be exact, and to give you an example for what has already begun, of construction work being done, or just starting off with their plans moving forward, doing what they want to do with our regards to us. They have put up fence gates without even getting notice to the tenants, and going, so this occurred yesterday, with no tenant knowing this was going to be done. And also possible face recognition is also part of their plans. Most of these things are said verbally, but it's not, nothing put in writing. Even when they have meetings, it's more indicating what you're going to do instead of regarding the tenants and residents' concerns and what their rights may be. I would like to see that no construction and renovations is done, and real discussions take place to make sure all the residents and tenants are safe and provided a place to go. Right now, a lot of the tenants are believing they have nowhere to go, and they don't know what's going to happen to them, you know, in this situation that is already occurring. You know, being able to have somewhere to go and return back to a renovation that's completed without feeling like, you know, something else is going to go on without their knowing, because they're not getting anything in detail or in writing. The tenants need to be provided with reasonable accommodations and regarded as a people that have rights to speak up and speak out when it seems wrong, so in a current. And just to get some examples of other things that have been verbally said that does not make sense to us, we ought to allow ourselves to be put in a position to move everything.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is Atonti Kueinchaub. See online?
Greetings and good day. My title is Atonti Kueinchaub, and I am an Aboriginal American, as referenced and described in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three of the Constitution of the United States. I'll be reading from the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People of 2016, Section Two, Article 18, Health, as it is reflected in the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, Article 24, Clause Two, which states, "We as copper-colored Aboriginal Americans and excluding Indians, not taxed." As indigenous people, whether as a nation-state, government, or whether we are just coming into the information and reclaiming our culture and heritage. While in our own home especially, we have the inherent and indispeasable right to the enjoyment. Enjoyment meaning to take delight in. Enjoyment meaning to have the use of or the benefit of, to rejoice in receiving the highest attainable standard of physical health. As an example, it's most importantly that I mention that we are supposed to receive the highest attainable standard of physical health when our monarchs are bringing our offspring into the world. When we are seeking to see regular doctors for ailments or deficits, or arriving in the emergency, when we need medication for ailments caused by the medication in which was prescribed to our women or people, that actually is harmful to their bodies and will be harmful to their bodies for the rest of their remaining life. Whether we are partially disabled, having problems in the legs, or partially blind, the highest attainable mental and spiritual health as well. How can we enjoy our inherent right to while being forcefully assimilated, incredulously discriminated against when seeking these services, especially in our own home once again, when even your citizen can go to the hospital and not have to fight or be forcefully removed from said hospital when only going to receive such services and have their constitutional rights protected? There is a legislation coming from my nation-state, the Air Quo Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, which I am far keep pro templo at this moment, and...
Thank you. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? Please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne S. Brown. First, I wanted to start off by saying that I didn't eat today, so I'm going to try to be civil to you, because you know I get kind of shaky when I don't eat. And as long as I've been sitting here and you don't start on time, that's what bothers me. They talk about the revenue of the city of Pittsburgh. How much are yens costing when you won't start a half an hour, you won't start before 10 o'clock, I mean, before 10:30. Last week, you started at 10:35 and just said, Rule Eight. And the law says that if you don't start by 10:30, you're supposed to, the meeting's supposed to be over. I don't want to look at Mr. Kraus, because you know what, Mr. Kraus, I've been praying to look at you in a different way. I've been praying not to be nasty to you, but you're nasty to me, and I can't help it. I'm old, and I'm set in my ways. If you treat me disrespectful, I'll be disrespectful to you, even though I try to teach my grandchildren when they come here that they are supposed to be respectful. Now, I heard the mayor say, oh, well, here's, he's got to speak, because if our children come in. When my grandbaby was speaking, Burgess said it's not the time or the place. But with Ms. Strasburger, and I have to bring it up because you were gone four months, and the only thing he would say is, excuse the acting member, and she came back four months with a baby on her lap that she sat and did public business. But when my five-year-old black child was speaking, he, Burgess gonna say it's not the time and the place. I don't bring her back because I'm not going to have you tear down her self-esteem. My grandbabies have watched city council for years. The one that's 21 years old, in June, she'll be 22. I used to sit in council every week with her. I taught her that she was supposed to come, and that's what she thinks she's supposed to do, all five of my grandchildren. The five-year-old, who is now eight, I will not bring her down. She said, Grandma, I want to go back. I don't want her to hear that she should not be down here speaking, see, because I'm old, 76 years old. I was taught it's our civil duty to tell you what we need. You don't know. You, if you don't live in my neighborhood, no way you would know. You wouldn't know that there had signs up that when the wintertime, at the top of the hill, would fall down, the blind man would walk down. I told him, don't go down there. You'll chop your head off, because they put two signs. And every time I call 311, they did nothing about it until finally I call somebody in URA. Last thing to you, Mr. Cahill, she has a gun. The woman that was chasing me, hollering at me, she has a gun. She pulled the gun off at 4:09. It was a man. I need a phone. I don't have a phone. Could you help me get one, Mr.?
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Cahill.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council?
Good morning. I'm Jacob. So at this part, when I usually get to speak, everyone has already left. There's nobody here. Usually speak to, basically empty of room in the council members. So I'm here in Pittsburgh, and believe it or not, what if I describe a scenario where there are people that were artificially made in Third World countries by women held captive in basements, being artificially impregnated after abductions and selective targeting? That person is brought here from Eastern Europe as a child with altered records through strange adoptions and things that circuitous, things that makes no sense. That person is in Pittsburgh, walking around with strange records, unadopted, adopted, strange USCIS information about being exonerated for labor, don't know their real name. And what if that, what if it's not a dystopian future? What if it's real? What if that person is standing in front of you right now, and his name is Jacob, but he doesn't know his real name? Because during the chaos in Eastern Europe in 19, in the 90s, after the Berlin Wall Civil War and Czechoslovak, Czechoslovakian conflicts in Eastern Europe and Romania, European police had him in custody when he was 10 years old and branded his birth certificate with the mark River Market because they found basements full of women being held captive and being forcibly impregnated after abductions and targeting of Jewish women in Europe, in Eastern Europe, to manufacture Einstein children to suffer money. And I'm that person. And I have one of those many thousands of people in the Pittsburgh area. I have a PhD from University of Pittsburgh. I worked for the National Energy Lab. Then I was a cashier at Giant Eagle. And then I worked for PNC Bank for 10 months as a bank teller, and they fired me. I have no idea why, because I did a good job. But I have no references from any of those places. I can't get a job. I have strange records. I don't know my name. I have no family, no friends. I walk around the streets confused, disoriented, and I'm waiting to be deported, because Eastern Europe's sad. That's the cycle. We make you here in basements by forcing impregnating Jewish women. We ship you to America with altered records. They use you up for labor and all sorts of things, keeping you isolated, blocking your communications. You have no friends, no, nothing. You're isolated, and then you get deported. And that's the next step. I'm walking around Pittsburgh, and USCIS has always started sending me documents, saying they're taking back my adoption, taking back my citizenship, canceling those things. And I'm being harassed. I'm being given records that don't make no sense. I'm hired and fired from jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And Chief Squato, if you have somebody you want here, you might as well tell them to come now. We'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Burgess? Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cahill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers from Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President?
Wow, okay.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1552, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Critical Sidewalk Gaps Project, where PWSA would be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work described herein and itemized in Exhibit B in an amount not to exceed $6,339.69, and further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Ramp in Public Sidewalk by $6,339.69." Bill 1553, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 3239th Street. Bill Number 1554, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 166 Banner Way, 9th Ward. Bill 1555, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1045 Forbes Avenue. Bill 1556, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for the Performance of Certain Work in Connection with the Hill District Master Plan in an Amount Not to Exceed $150,000 for the Hill District Master Plan. Bill Number 1557, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh or an URA affiliate to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in 5th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County is Block 26P, Lot 164, Council District Number 6. Bill 1558, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between a URA of Pittsburgh and Reed Roberts Housing Limited Partnership or a Related Entity for the Sale of Block 11A, Lots 35, 36, 37, 38, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 46, 47... 37, 38, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 46, 47, and 48, and Block 11E, Lots 300A, 300B, 301, 304, 305, 306, 307, 308, 309, 310, 311, 312, 313, 314, 318, and 319, in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill 1559, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between a URA of Pittsburgh and Salem's Market Center Avenue LLC or a Related Entity for the Sale of Block 11A, Lot 123, in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1551, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Efficiency Network, Inc., for Costs Associated with Project Management for the Planning, Design, and Services During Construction to Convert the City's Network of High-Pressure Sodium Lights to Energy-Efficient LED Luminaries within three years, providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $2,240,269.
Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1560, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $8,375 to Jane D. Simone Esquire for Arbitration Services rendered in connection with FOP arbitration. And Bill 1561, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney, PC, in an Amount Not to Exceed $40,000 for Expert Legal Services in Connection with Human Resource-Related Litigation.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1562, Ordnance Accepting a New Name Rutherford Glenn Place in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, as per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in April 2023. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill 1563, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, effective December 18, 2015, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program, and Approving the 2016 Through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing ADA Compliance by $6,554.34 and Increasing CDBG Administration by $6,554.34." Bill Number 1564, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 Through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing ADA Compliance by $715.45 and Increasing CDBG Administration by $715.45." And Bill Number 1565, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 Through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, so as to Reallocate Community Development Block Grant CARES Act, Funding and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements."
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have one appointment to directorship, Deputy Director, one appointment to a commission, and two communications. Take the Deputy Director first, please.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1566, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Ian Fitzgerald as Deputy Director in the Department of Finance.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So, move.
In a second?
Brief discussion, Madam President.
Yes.
I thank you very much. I think on informing, it's, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong. Is it receive, read, receive, and file?
Read, receive, file.
So, the motion would be to read, receive, and file.
Okay. On my paper, it says motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Madam President.
Motion to read, receive, and file. Thank you, Councilman, for pointing that out.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll motion that. Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The appointment's approved. And one appointment for the commission?
Bill Number 1567, Resolution Appointing Chiquita Barnett as a Member of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission for Term to Expire December 31, 2025.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to interview or a motion to approve? We have a lot of interviews to do, just so you know.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the appointment's approved. And we have two communications?
Bill Number 1572, Communication from John H. Patterson, Executive Director of Pittsburgh Community Television Corporation, Submitting PCTV's 2022 Annual Report. And Bill Number 1577, Communication from Jay Gilmore, Stop the Violence Coordinator for the Department of Public Safety, Submitting the Stop the Violence Quarterly Report on Community Investment Grants, dated February 10, 2023, through May 10, 2023.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, we'll move on to unfinished business. I have one paper. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Unfinished Business, Bill Number 1514, Resolution Appointing Larry Scrotto as Chief of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, Department of Public Safety.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion?
Plenty.
Councilman?
Yeah. Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so I had the, I had the privilege to be present for the confirmation hearing that Council held, I guess, just a matter of a few days ago. And even though I have known soon-to-be Chief Scrotto previously from having had experience to work with him, I have to, I have to admit, I was really impressed with how prepared he came to answer a multitude of questions that we here at Council had. And not only came prepared, but really didn't skip a beat in that interview process. And even I have to admit, I was a little taken aback by just how thoroughly prepared he was to come and petition his cause before, before Council. It's, this is a very, a very important decision at a very important time, and not just here for just the city of Pittsburgh, but really cities across the nation that are grappling with what it is like to protect and serve in a modern environment and what would be required of the Bureau. And I, and I am pleasantly pleased and surprised that Larry brings that, or soon-to-be Chief Scrotto brings that to the table. And I do believe that at this point in time, I think that the Gani administration, through their process, and now Council through our process, have come up with a perfect candidate to fill that position at this, this difficult and challenging time. So, I certainly am going to vote in favor of confirmation today for Acting Chief Scrotto to become the Chief of Police here in Pittsburgh, and in fact, very proud to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just wanted to say, first and foremost, I really wanted a local product to be our next police chief, so I was glad the mayor checked that box. And Mr. Scrotto, I'll tell you, I was really impressed with the knowledge that he has of the challenges he's facing. The first thing I asked him is, how many police officers do you have? And he knew that number right on. So, I think he recognizes the challenges. He won me over, I will tell you, and I think he won most of this, if not all of this Council over, I believe. And, you know, I want to also note that, you know, Mr. Scrotto has a lucrative career as a basketball referee, and he has chosen to set that aside, at least for the time being, until his tenure runs out here as police chief. So, to me, that proves the dedication he has to the city, the love that he has for the city. And I did my own surveys with many police officers, rank-and-file commanders, you name it, and really had nothing but good things to say about him. So, after our interviews, after getting to know him a little bit better, he has also won my confidence, and I will be voting affirmative for him today. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill is the Chair of Public Safety. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I appreciate it. President Smith, so not only was the candidate well-prepared and well-spoken, well-researched, his answers really were nuanced, and again, as other members have said, really thoughtful and understanding the challenges, the, I think, Council side of the issues, obviously had done, Mr. Scrotto has done his homework on Council's debate over kind of what is the future of policing and how do we best serve and protect our residents. And I was, I was really impressed by his interview. I left after four hours. I'm not sure how much longer it went on than that. Honestly, I didn't watch, but I can pull it up on YouTube, and I encourage anyone else to do that because then you can watch at double speed, and you don't have to sit through the entire four hours. But it really was, I think, the best you could hope for in this kind of discussion, as I really want to commend Acting Chief Scrotto on that, and I am absolutely 100% voting in support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from any other members? I would just say that I've also worked with Chief Scrotto when he was Commander Scrotto up in Zone 3, and he was really, did a great job there, but I think he's returning to a different department, slightly different department. And I think that he's going to have his challenges cut out for him, and we all know that, and we want to be supportive of his efforts. But I do think that there's going to be a time when, and this department seems like there's a division between some of the older members who have dedicated their whole lives to our public safety and deserve some, and earned respect, and those who are new, who are coming in, who want to see some change and want to see some things different. I think he's going to have a challenge bringing those people together and making one bureau that's ready and willing to serve the public under the direction of himself and of the mayor in the way that they would like to see it. But I think that anybody can do it. I think he can definitely do it because he has a personality, not only the personality, but he definitely has a lot of answers. And although I do wonder why he would give up his lucrative job for this one, because, but I'm thankful that he did, because it's really, he is giving up a lot. And I think for us here in Pittsburgh, we want to thank him for his willingness to put us and our safety and our bureau first. We're at a different, challenging time where I think we need to make sure that we're blending the old and the new and all this. I have the same kind of challenges, and I think we all do, in some of our districts and our neighborhoods. But for, when it's your police bureau that has those challenges, it becomes a different level of concern and importance. And so, I would just say, we're here to help you however we can, to make your job easier, and to make sure that you're valuing all the members of the Bureau of Police, whether they are your supporters, whether they were people that questioned you, whether they're people that have been here for a long time, or new hires, or new recruits. I hope that you, they all feel valued by you and that you feel that value from us. With that said, rule call vote, please.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Congratulations, Chief. And now, the hardest part, you have to stand, listen to us talk some more. And I do think that it's timely to have somebody who can help us get through some of these, the violent crimes that we're seeing in the city. And so, I just want him to make sure he knows we're all here to help however we can. Our next order of business is reports to committee for final action, and we'll go start with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Councilman Lavelle?
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1547, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for May 17, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1501, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $12,534.40. Bill Number 1502, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Risinger, Comer, and Miller, LLC, for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $12,432.68. And Bill Number 1504, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Three Warrants with a Total Sum of $20,000. It is further understood and agreed that the payment schedule of the total settlement amount shall be as follows. $6,000 less applicable tax withholdings and other deductions will be issued to plaintiff Joseph Duresh, along with an IRS Form W-2 in connection with this payment. $6,000 will be issued to plaintiff Joseph Duresh, along with IRS Form 1090 in connection with this payment, and $8,000 will be issued to plaintiff's attorneys, Rothman, Gordon, PC, for fees and expenses related to litigation.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And Mr. Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1548, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for May 17, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1500, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Gannett Fleming, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project, providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $1,479,327.40, an increase of $873,812.33 from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by Resolution 276 of 2018, to add funding for the preliminary engineering and final design phases of the project.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion of the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. That moves us on to, sorry, Councilwoman Barb Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1549, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for Technology for May 17, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1505, Resolution Amending Resolution 279 of 2022, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Planet Technologies in a form approved by the City Solicitor in order to provide for compensation for, one, access a comprehensive Microsoft library for training, reporting, and customized materials, and, two, assistance business hours to support, manage, and grow office 365 environments critical to mitigating applications to the cloud by increasing the cost by $105,000. Bill 1506, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Granicus, Inc., in a form approved by the city solicitor for website content management at a cost not to exceed two hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you. And Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill number fifteen fifty, reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen thirty-four, resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from Boca, Inc., to the applicant Kura Sushi, U.S.A., Inc., located at four fifteen Cinema Drive pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Bill fourteen ninety-seven, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for twenty-one sixty-three Center Avenue. Bill fourteen ninety-eight, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Cruise Development LLC at seventeen oh nine and seventeen eleven Cliff Street. And Bill fourteen ninety-nine, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Congress of neighboring communities connect in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars for two thousand and twenty-three municipal membership dues. Bill number fifteen twenty-four, resolution authorizing the city controller to pay an annual membership due for two thousand and twenty-three to the Community Foundation for the Alleghenies for the Connect program at a cost not to exceed six thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. And Bill number fifteen twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and council as a body to pay annual membership dues for two thousand and twenty-three to the Community Foundation for the Alleghenies for the Connect program at a cost not to exceed six thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on the city's fleet vehicles. Councilman Coghill will chair. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, council standing committees meeting is scheduled for ten a.m. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. Wednesday morning, chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also, due next week's Memorial, due to next week's Memorial Day holiday, council's regular and standing committees meeting are scheduled for ten a.m. and one-thirty p.m. respectively on Wednesday, May thirty-first. To register to speak during these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage or call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one, three eight. Is there anything for members? Councilman Kraus?
Thanks, Madam President. I know it's been a long meeting, and I don't mean to take more time than necessary, but I did want to reference for members legislation that was passed in Harrisburg yesterday as it relates to gun violence here in the state. I, I don't have this number exactly, please forgive me, but the last tally, there's been one thousand nine hundred people in the state of Pennsylvania that have fallen victim to gun violence. But yesterday, House Bill ten eighteen, that created extreme risk protection orders to prevent firearm suicides, mass shootings, and domestic violence homicides, passed one oh two to ninety-nine, heading to the Senate. House Bill seven fourteen, to enact universal background checks to stop weapons of war from getting in the wrong hands by closing the gap in the P.A. system that allows long guns to be privately purchased or transferred without background check. That bill passed one oh nine to ninety-two. That heads to the Senate. Unfortunately, Lost and Stolen came up for a vote and narrowly missed by one oh one to one hundred. Members, I know Councilman Burgess was here, two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine, Councilman Doug Shields, myself, and then Councilman Paduto passed, well, introduced Lost and Stolen tracking legislation here for the City of Pittsburgh. The council did pass it, I believe it was eight to two, if I remember the vote correctly, but we've never been able to enforce it because of state law that limits us in taking that power locally. That's a conversation we've been having for the better part of thirteen or fourteen years, but I do think it speaks to a, I do think it speaks to a shift in mindset that is extremely encouraging, that, that Lost and Stolen could come up to that close of a vote and possibly head to the Senate for passage. And so we'll continue the fight, and we'll continue to, to keep it in front of, of the legislators and the voters. And God willing, one day, we actually will be track, tracking the, the scourge of illegal guns that are being trafficked on our streets that are killing our residents. And then a fourth bill, which would require safe storage of guns to prevent school shootings, suicides, and unintentional shootings, was advanced at a second consideration, but it was not brought up for a vote yesterday. But the actions, I think, of the state legislature yesterday are, are encouraging, I'll use that word, and perhaps we are heading to a better day as it relates to gun violence and the, and the cancer that it is on our culture today. So thank you, Madam President, for that time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I'll just, thank you, Councilman Kraus, for the reminder of, of the importance of yesterday's votes. And just to add to that, as a reminder, it was this body as well that advanced an extreme risk protection order bill and safe, safe storage at the council level as well in two thousand and nineteen. So to see it, at least, you know, some of these bills advance at the state level is unexpected and encouraging. I agree with you. Thank you.